No, he was in here the day you were off and we had it. He got it from here.
I brought it to him after we were dead.
I brought it over and laid it on your desk and then he showed up.
That's what he has there.
Cause I, he needed two copies and I gave him one so he got the second.
Yeah, he got something after dead.
But it greened up, so you guys are going out fighting fires now?
Not for a while.
For now?
Not for now.
Rest up.
Oh, if it keeps going.
Normally, you know, we're starting to dry out by now getting ready for 4th of July beers.
Yeah.
Like, it might be kinda nice this year.
It'll go bang away.
Didn't Guthrie that long?
In the city limits.
That wasn't a little bit much.
Yeah.
There ain't very many people that have that.
So they'll all be in the country now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. They'll scramble all out on the bridges.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sit around River Bridges and be packed.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always pretty popular up there on, I had a view of that place, you know, that concrete bridge or whichever.
Mm-hmm.
And you covered up with beer bottles and routine.
I certainly believe in Independence Day, but I do not believe it ought to last for six or eight.
We're still down.
Well, that's no joke.
Yeah, on the county, you can do whatever it is you want to do. My golly, he talked about limited government. That's what it's all about.
Anyways, I try to limit my actions.
It's a lot.
It's quite a lot.
Yeah. You and French, your neighbors, yeah.
And just so you understand, what I understood for Tuesday, I was, we want the next, and we were just getting ready to.
Let me clarify that for you. Let me get Randall to give you a presentation, cause we all, we take that document that you have and we give it to the state, and then the state approves it out. So it's...
I just didn't want to screw up that tip.
Come on, come on.
Morning, Rowan.
Morning. How you doing?
Good. Sleepy, sleepy. Sit down front row, Rowan.
You need his agenda? I bet, yeah. What, what party child?
You guys wanted him?
I've got one.
To get one? Yeah.
Monty, you making her more efficient with her phone to go with it everywhere? All right, let's call this meeting to order. Please rise from the flag, salute.
Ready, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, item number three. Lock and load.
Before we get started on that, could I ask a question?
No, sir, you cannot.
All right, thank you.
It's not on the agenda and... Item three, discussion of possible action on resolution living assessing of three-fourths of one percent county tax upon gross proceeds and gross receipts derived from all sales taxable under the Oklahoma Sales Tax Code prescribing the effective date and duration of tax, prescribing the purpose of such tax, requiring approval of such tax by a majority of the registered voters voting in an election held for the purposes as provided by law, providing exemptions from said tax, providing for interest and penalties for failure to pay tax when due, authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to make administrative and technical changes and additions except tax rate, amending County Resolution 10-26 to change the termination date of the existing sales tax, extended levy and assess thereby and providing severabilities of provisions. All right.
Well, I'm kind of the one that got this on the agenda and kind of got the ball rolling and I'd like to see us lower the Logan County sales tax from one cent down to three-quarters and kind of redistribute the money and I'll make the motion approved.
So this is lowering the tax?
It's lower by one quarter percent on the county side, county sales tax. Take it from one cent down to three-quarters. Right now, the jail gets three-quarters, the fire departments get a quarter, which y'all know, most of y'all know, and this will be lowered by quarter of a cent. And it'll maintain and operate the jail, it'll maintain and operate roads, and keep the fire departments in the direction they're going. And that would be all 13 fire departments in Logan County, including the city of Guthrie.
And all we're gonna hear is letting people decide.
The people, it's up to the people, but I can see where we can lower it by quarter of a cent and pay the jail off early. I think it's a winner and a deal for everybody.
I have reservations.
That's all we're here for.
I understand. I believe that, uh, that we should go a little lower. And what I'm wondering is if you would entertain to amend this to be three-sixteenths for all entities, lowering the overall sales tax to a nine-and-sixteenths, which would be one-sixteenth above a half cent.
Well, you know, I sit on the jail trust, Mike, and the jail trust adjusts the salaries and benefits along with the million dollars a year.
I understand.
And I'm not sure that the sheriff, I can't speak for the sheriff, I'm not sure he could function at jail on that level. Takes a million bucks a year just for that.
Do we have an accounting of all of his funds?
Well, I sit in his commission, we can't look at his cash D accounts and all of that. I mean, we have to go off what we know. I mean, we can't look into his cash D account.
I understand.
And I've...
Though you would think that'd be available for the Freedom of Information Act.
It's true, but we can't consider it on the budget side.
I see.
He has as much money, any one of these officers that have big cash accounts can have as much money as they want in there and we can't look at it, they can volunteer to.
I've been to a few fire chief meetings, not very many, but spoke with a lot of them and that's also the equipment nowadays. Personally, I'd like to juggle Jay to the cent, but they tell me that they need the whole quarter.
Well, that would be three-sixteenths, which would be more than an eighth, but less than a quarter. And when you take a look at our sales tax income increase, it's exponential. The, uh, we had a figure last fiscal year, ending in June of 13, we had $4,77,000 that, on that one penny sales tax. This year, it's appearing that it will be in excess of $6.5 million. So the increase in sales tax revenues is really jumping. I looked at back there when we reduced it three-quarters cent, and already, sales tax was jumping. Record amount in Guthrie and in Logan County as well. So I'm looking at the increases in the sales tax income to the county with all the new growth in businesses that we have coming in that will be more than able to make up that eight cent sales tax. When you look at the quarter cent that our department started with back there 10 years ago, I think it was about, what was it, about 235, I think, 235,000? And now that quarter cent is, this in 13 fiscal year was well over, right about a million dollars, and this year is looking like it's gonna be a million and a half.
What did that fire cost back then?
Well, I understand.
What did it cost today?
I understand. Uh, but a three-sixteenths versus a quarter, how much is that? And with the inducement of that lower than admin sales tax, I think that it would be an inducement for more businesses to come in so that we would have faster growth in businesses here, as well as a faster increase in the sales tax income. So that's what I'm looking at, and I think...
I'll tell you where I stand on this. I've been visiting with the sheriff, I sit on the jail trust, and I think it's gonna take a quarter of a cent to operate it. I've been to a few charter or chief meetings and they, they tell me they need a quarter and I told them I would support it, and that's where I stand. I make the motion we approve.
I, I do have a question though, and I caught it here, and I don't know, I don't know who, I wish Lowell was here. It says, authorizes the Board of Commissioners to make administrative and technical changes and additions except for the rate. What does that mean? Does that mean that the Board of Commissioners, whoever they may be, can move that money, change where it goes here? I, I know it can't go offside the ballot, but if the jail didn't need one-third for a month, could that go to roads type thing?
I can't answer that, I don't know. Loaf or legal, road for stores.
I mean, I've never seen any, any of us ever be able to change... Whatever this is, it's very, very strict, and I've never seen a board, whether it be a commissioners or the city, ever be able to manipulate any of those money. And I'm sure that's the case, I just, it just caught my eye.
You make administrative and technical changes?
We can actually, we can recess and try to reach you on phone.
You want me to call?
Yeah, I like question.
I honestly don't know how the previous ones were wanted.
I think he patterned this after Hain County sales tax. And maybe that that's...
That's, that's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, if the state purchasing laws, if they change, then the administration of it would have to change, and in technical part would have to change. That might be the...
I think it probably refers to bookkeeping.
And that's what I'm thinking. That's kind of how I read it when I read it.
Mike, I'd love to lower the sales tax as well, but after visiting with the sheriff and a few of the fire chiefs, I told them that I would support. If I tell you something, I'm sure enough I'm gonna do it. That's where I stand. Okay? But if y'all want to get this, we recess and Troy can call Lowell and clarify it and come back in or however you want to do it.
I think it just, let's see what I, hey, in case the procedures change.
My question was, which I visited, rolling, and we, you know, normally, we have all the fire departments listed out, and I guess that law has changed, you don't have to list them out, it's just all 13 fire departments.
Well, they would be all, what, certified authorized fire departments that come in, so if a new fire department was able to get the certifications and everything required for a fire department, then they would be able to participate in that quarter cent as well.
Now, I know this is a big political deal, and I mean, to me, we're lowering the sales tax from one cent to three-quarters, I don't know why that's such a political deal to everybody. And y'all know the budget on the road, I mean, if we're gonna...
I do. I certainly don't have that problem with the roads, because we need an income that's going to increase over, along with inflation. I'm really not having an issue with that one. I figured that it would be more equitable if everybody came down a sixteenth of a penny.
Well, Troy has emailed me a deal on the sales tax collections, you know, all 77 counties?
Sure.
And I think there's probably 27 counties that get a sales tax for roads, but a lot of these counties even went to the distance of putting in for the county election board, or, I mean, they break it all down to each office, they even include the Free Fair Board, and had I been thinking, I might have plugged in a number from the Free Fair Board, 'cause I like to sit and prove our fair ground.
All three of these, A, B, and C, is a proper function of government, but that's three of the basics, actually.
Well, you gotta have all, you gotta have fire protection, police protection, sergeant. And if you ain't got roads, you ain't gonna be out there stopping crime or putting the fire out.
Well, we have that, as well as the reduction we'll be looking at next year because of the reduction in the property tax revenue for general government. And if Jim is needing to pull from that, which of course, he's number one on the pecking order, then, you know, there's not any, gonna be anything left for us, whereas I had hoped in the past in that that increase in revenue, and we passed a resolution on that, that some of that could be taken to put on the roads, but obviously, that has not transpired.
It has transpired because of the amount of money that the auditor projected, or not auditor, or accountant projected, is wrong, has been wrong since day one.
Beyond belief wrong.
And so, when the money's not there, you can't spend it if you don't have it.
That's fact. And so, basically, the only way to not be able to have this tax, I mean, the county government's gonna partially have to shut down, which of course, is gonna plug the whole system up and give very poor service to our citizens.
I mean, the county assessment, lower our taxes, we estimate it's gonna cut the general government budget about $300,000 that will...
The estimate I heard was a hundred thousand.
Okay, a hundred thousand, so we're a hundred thousand less than...
That came from our state representative.
That was the figure that was reported at the meeting at the State Capitol that was held with the schools, the assessor, our state rep moderated or was present there, and actually, he's the one in that meeting that stated, projected the biggest cut was not gonna be to the schools, but to county generals budget, and it was estimated at a hundred thousand.
So we're gonna cut our general government at a hundred thousand, which is good, I mean, people saving a little tax money. The jail, we're gonna have to pick the jail load up, which is gonna be the employees and the benefits, about a million bucks a year.
That'll come first.
And the jail, he's been doing a good job, he's been operating off his cash D accounts, but now DOC is pulling them inmates out of Logan County jails, that's gonna, the average month is about $30,000 a month there. So, I mean, we're gonna fall pretty short, and I think he's gonna have to have a whole quarter. And the fire departments, I mean, I'm not there on a day-to-day basis, but I pay the price of the trucks, I mean, you see them on the open bridge.
Well, I understand that.
They're extremely high.
But look at what our sales tax revenue is doing. I mean, it's really climbing.
I, I get that.
And it's gonna climb faster.
I get that.
And so, what I'm saying is, is that that shortfall is gonna be more than made up by the growth we have here in the county.
So if, if the people approve this, lowering the tax, it'll grow fast.
And if we lower it more, it'll grow even faster than that.
At some point, you're doing the Laffer curve.
So I've been a proponent that less is more, not to do away, but that less is more. And in my humble opinion, a three-sixteenths may not be adequate just yet from that viewpoint, but, and it would be a, and it would not be an... Matter of fact, I don't think you'd see anything but a little glitch when it comes to your actual income. And so, that's why I'm going for that three-sixteenths on that, as well as the deal. I would have liked to put everything in an eighth. And...
I'd like not even have one, but...
I'd like to not even have one as well.
It's all about the day.
But I'm going against something that I did put in one of my pledges, but then I had no idea that all this was gonna transpire. And now we're cut down to the chase, and the sheriff's department is going to have to have funding because of all of what we already stated.
I'm always pledged to lower property taxes, and I'll second the motion to lower the sales tax as well, to allow it to go to the voted people.
I just want to be clear, Monty made a motion as this reads to take it to the three-quarters, that's what you're seconding?
Lowering it a quarter cent? Yes. I'm seconding the motion to take it to the people to vote on lowering the sales tax for Logan County.
To three-quarters?
For Jake's support?
Well, you know, either the people get a voice or they don't, and I'm not a dictator, so I'm not gonna sit up here and try to be a dictator. And as far as I'm concerned, a 110-pound, mm, sexually oriented, male, justified, filed on 23rd Lincoln shouldn't be trying to be dictator either. So all in favor? I? All opposed? Item four, discussion of possible action on calling a special county election on August 26, 2014 to submit for approval and disapproval of the registered voters of the sales tax resolution described above. You need both of these sides?
I move it through.
How many you have? Do you have three here?
Should be two of each thing, two resolutions, two orders, two notices.
Okay, all right, I get you. This is the way. I was just saying... Item four. Did you make a motion on that?
Monty has a motion, I need a second.
Well, I will second item four, call for an election.
And the vote?
Call in, please.
Aye. This is item, actually, technically, that's four, there's two options to the other.
I hope you guys get out there and help me, he gonna use it against me then, I gotta help. We'll be there. If you're on fire, Mark, we'll put you out. Item number five.
I sure won't keep up me up too.
Consideration of possible action on approving blanket for...
Make that one shoot.
Are they yours?
No.
Well, there is. I just wanted to help him out.
Yeah, he don't stay.
Need a second.
I'll say.
Mr. Goodman, it's not on the agenda for citizens' desire to be heard, but if you do have a legitimate question, you can ask it. We're not allowed to get into business off that subject though, so... And the public is not part of the commissioners' meeting by law. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item six, consideration of possible action on certifying bridge load posting.
I move that through.
Well, don't just yet, I think I may have grabbed the wrong seat.
Oh.
Still got one, I think I want me to close, so...
Did you move?
I did. Mike, I think that the top one here is yours. Honestly, I didn't do yours, but we done ours, so I think they put that on my list for some reason.
Oh, they just like you.
I guess, I guess, 'cause I got 99% of the bridge, so...
Just figured it had to be yours.
99%, my boy. I think I'm holding right up there close to you.
Well, I don't know, that green area is pretty big on the mound.
I was seconding the motion.
You don't think that pink area is very large?
Michael.
I'd say...
I stick to the agenda. I'll vote aye.
Aye.
Item seven, consideration of possible action on completing officer's report and estimate of needs for commissioners, general government, insurance, charity. Uh-uh.
My number never gonna do... I'm not gonna ask you to do this, but you can attest for these.
I just...
This is where it's important, right?
He's gonna start with that insurance since it's on some...
Yeah.
These are choice numbers. These are the five accounts that are tied to employee benefits and/or required employee
How much of workman's comp do we have, please?
If you'll look under warrants issued for workman's comp, last year's bill was $149,434, and we just received this year's bill, it goes to $164,037.
So a twenty, fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Yep.
So if we wanna come out on that quarter cent, we're gonna have to help that jail on the...
That's 10% increase.
We have not seen the property liability bill yet.
Yeah. I haven't heard from any.
So on this, if you look at what the, the cost of FICA, under warrants issued, so far, it's been $134,000, that does not include the month of June, we've not run payroll for June, $13,000 held out in reserve to cover June, leaves a turnback of 74, 98, 76, and a recommendation to ask for $157,000. Retirement was appropriated $350,000. As of May 31st, we've expended $291,671.17 with a reserve of $29,000 for the month of June. Determined unencumbered, $29,328, that'll roll back to the budget. Recommendation to estimate for next year, $350,000. Unemployment was appropriated $35,000 to date, or through May 31st, the expense has been $18,238 with an estimate for this quarter that we'll have to encumber by the end of this month of $11,000, leaving 7238 to roll back, and a suggested estimate for next year of $35,000. Workman's comp, we just discussed, last year it was $149,434, the new bill is $164,378. We not only have to ask for that amount of money, we have been asking for that 100% at the temporary July 1, because we save $5,000 if we pay it one payment instead of two. If we take it to two, the bill goes to 169. The employee insurance was budgeted $600,000... The employee insurance was budgeted six hundred and sixty thousand through May thirtieth. We've spent twenty-five, eight ninety-four. We're holding fifty-three thousand for the month of June in reserves to leave it unencumbered of eighty-one thousand. Uh, with a recommendation to, to budget the same six sixty. Remember, it looks like we roll a lot back and we do. But the problem with the health insurance is we have to budget as if every employee took the full benefit. And then as we go through the year, we have those that don't use the full benefit, so we don't spend it. But you have to budget if everyone walked in to take a hundred percent.
But the money's not gone, it just rolled in.
Exactly.
So it's reused. I think we got several.
See, these were just.
No, I'm good with it.
Michael?
Yeah.
Alright. Now we have, were we a cherry?
I didn't do anything with the insurance, it's 'cause I don't deal with them.
You know, there's been a year that we've used all the. We bury people with that.
Yeah. But can't bury themselves.
Uh, the county commissioners, count this next. Uh, personal services was appropriated a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred last year. A hundred and seventy-three, one twenty-one is what has already been issued, I set in the reserves for this month of June. It's fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four. So four hundred and four dollars is unencumbered, but that's because of the month or two difference, so I didn't go into that.
So we just leave the same?
Mm-hmm. No part time.
No part time.
Keep it.
Well, you gotta leave five dollars in there.
Keep it also, five dollars.
Capital expenses, twenty-two thousand, five hundred, what was appropriated last year. Uh, warrants issued nineteen thousand, eight hundred. I put in reserve the eighteen hundred for the month of June, that leaves unencumbered nine hundred. I think you guys put in a little bit last year in case I went to any classes.
That would be where that nine hundred.
Right, right.
So we just leave the same?
Yeah.
Did you have classes?
Say again?
I said, did the low change?
On what?
No.
Travel?
Travel, no, did, did not.
Okay, maintenance and operations, unencumbered two thousand dollars, one issued a hundred and eighty-seven, seventy-six. I put a hundred and fifty in reserve because I did feel for office people. And that leaves unencumbered sixteen hundred dollars.
Oh.
But everything comes out of general.
Most of everything I do comes out of general, I mean, there's some office supplies that I, small things that I do just to.
Drop two thousand, fifteen hundred?
Sounds like. I'd take thousand.
Couple outlays, not applied. Um, budgets, we have that.
Actually, I don't. The thing to remember with the county audit account is that statutory, that we have to put in one tenth of one mil. And until we get millage, we won't know the amount.
So.
But we're, we're gonna estimate, we know it's gonna go up a little bit. You can estimate, just for the sake of turning this in, until we have an accurate figure, what we had last year, which was eighty-six, two oh one. It will change depending on valuation.
So we can beat that dog, but it's set by law.
General, general? Um, with general, the numbers have changed since I've done this. So, uh, personal services, twenty-nine thousand, warrants issued, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three. Reserves is, um, for the pulse checks for the month of June, so two thousand, one hundred and fifty. So determined unencumbered is two thousand, four hundred and seventeen.
I say we leave it the same, so, just in case we hit the higher part time.
We're, we're actually gonna have an extra payout if I can't get his comp hours down, so.
So do you, do you feel that twenty-nine's enough?
Part of that, does that twenty-nine include the transfer?
That includes, if you look down at the bottom.
The transfer.
She transferred.
So, at twenty-nine.
Would be good.
So part time would be still at zero, or, or nevermind, sorry. We had part time for five thousand last year, but we transferred three thousand, so it's coming out unencumbered two thousand.
I might believe it at five, just, just in case.
Uh, maintenance and operation, four hundred and ten thousand. Warrants issued, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixty-seven. Uh, reserves, um, feels that I had when I did this was sixty-four hundred, but that has increased. So determined unencumbered at the time of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-one, but that has been rolled in. The mon, the mon, the bills for June is like ten thousand dollars.
So. So the reserves go to sixteen-four, I'm a, unencumbered twenty-five?
Yeah.
Estimated.
Yeah.
So we're gonna lower that to just an even four hundred?
Um, mind you, that's the, is the property and liability insurance bill and we don't know what it's gonna be.
I wasn't gonna go way in.
Uh.
Since they inspected all the buildings this year.
Yeah, and we did have a little earthquake or two.
Yeah.
Let's just leave it four-ten, I mean, this is gonna be, gonna be come back to the board.
Got you.
Monday, Monday.
Alright, sounds good.
Uh, capital outlay was a hundred and eighty-one thousand, six twenty-two last year. Warrants issued was thirty-one thousand, uh, nothing in reserve, and then unencumbered right now is a hundred and fifty thousand.
So we didn't spend all the budget, huh?
What?
Well, you know, last year we had.
On the reserve, we still got that reserve on.
Actually, the parking lot one is reserved from the twelve-thirteen that we need to get something figured out.
I call it.
On that, that's not part of this. And, and the capital outlay for general government fluctuates. You can, that's just kinda where that big fluctuation comes. So I think typically the request is two hundred.
We kept last year one eighty-one to.
Well, that's, yeah, that's just kinda where any of those adjustments in trying to balance.
So you want to put on her for two hundred? Or you want to go one eighty-one?
It's gonna get adjusted regardless because that's the way it works, so we put it in for two hundred and it'll adjust down.
Maybe we just leave it down and it'll adjust.
We wanna adjust.
You wanna leave it at one eighty-one, six twenty-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
And why, why move up if we stay there? Or go down, huh? After the X has voted, decide the final outcome, committee is in. Alright, so you happy with what we just did?
Yeah, I need a motion.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item eight, consideration possible action on the jury.
Make motion.
Second. Aye.
Alright.
Where's your?
Your jury.
Marvin Goodman. Who do you represent?
So?
Just, okay, I wasn't sure if you were here.
I appreciate.
Do you have anything special or just watching it?
Well, I'm always doing something special.
Glad you were here.
Except for Fox.
I woke up like every hour. I thought it was not.
Love was in there. Thank you, gentlemen.
How you doing?
I'm here.
I'm here.
Missed you at the first, first place.
Oh, yeah.
We were real one. Suck you.
For what?
I don't know.
The tip of two.
We're there. Well, we were doing the railroad thing, that's your kettle dish.
I hope it's never.
I hope not.
Yeah.
I don't wanna talk to her. Basically did what I needed to do.
Senator, say.
I said, okay.
Hopefully the county can still rule it too. However.